Good morning and welcome to our June 16th Board of Supervisors regularly held meeting in Weaverville. We will call this meeting to order in open session. And the Sheriff, Sapsen, has kindly agreed to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed, just as for all. Thank you very much.
So just a little housekeeping before we get started. We are joined by Zoom and by the phone. So we will take a quick survey to see what supervisors are present and how they are, as well as the general public. So Supervisor Finley, are you joining us today? Okay, you are joining us. Thank you and welcome. Glad to have you here, John. Supervisor Brown, are you joining us by phone or by Zoom?
Supervisor Brown is here by Zoom.
Ah, thank you. Good job. So, and members of the public? Are there any department heads joining us either by phone or by Zoom?
I'm County Council.
Thank you, Mrs. Long.
Good morning, Connie Smith.
Are there any public members? Anybody from the public?
Brian Tarbell here, Nate Work.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, so a few more items. On Zoom and on the phone, there will be no use of profanity. You will be cut off. If you do not hear the three-minute timer, which is understandable, you will also be timed out. So you might be talking, but we will not be able to hear you. We will be moving on. On closing out, on the June 2nd, 2020, regularly-held Board of Supervisors agenda, item 6.1 was continued with direction to staff. On item 6.2, direction was given to staff. I'm going to have Dr. Coons report out on item 6.3. I had refused myself.
Yes, that was the interviews for the Health Services Director, and I'm proud to say that the board selected Liz Hamilton to be appointed to our Health Services Director. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Liz. And on June 4th, 2020, there is a special closed meeting. I was also absent. Supervisor Brown, would you like to report out on that?
Yes, direction was given to staff for that item.
Okay. So I know in our agenda, it has public comment next, but what we have been doing is been receiving an update by the COVID team, who's been working very diligently. And so we will start with that, and then we will move on to public comment.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. I'm Sister Cuzell, HHS Public Health Branch Director. I'd like to update you on our testing numbers to date. We've conducted 642 total tests. 575 of those are negative. Two have been positive and resolved, and 65 are pending. The threshold we want to get to is 1.5 per thousand population. We are at 1.38. The 1.5 number is really important because we have to have a sufficient number of tests to measure our percent positive rate against, which tells us how we're really doing in county with regard to controlling the disease spread. And we're doing a pretty darn good job, okay? So one of the things that we wanted to update you on is the containment plan and the threshold metric on what we look at with regard to how we toggle back or move forward with sector reopening. As you know, the state is also monitoring counties' county data, and the state is prepared to engage counties that are unable to meet those thresholds to see how they can assist in that effort. We are, with the case incident rate 1,000 per 1,014 days, in Level 3, we want to be no more than three to five cases per 1,000 population over a 14-day period. We are currently, we have met that currently. As you know, we've had two positive cases for the entire event. Also, the number of deaths, we've had none. Hospitalization number, we've had no hospitalizations in Trinity County related to COVID. The caveat I wanted to say with regard to our county hospital system is that two of the metrics are about hospitalization numbers and surge capacity in ICU. In our county, since we do not have ICU unit in our hospital, we have to depend on statewide systems to assist us in those hospitalizations. So what we look at is state data to do that, both regionally and statewide. So the two, there are two key points in time that the state looked at after May 8th and Memorial Weekend. May 8th was the initial reopening, and Memorial Weekend was, you know, when things started to move around a bit. And so the hospitalization numbers have slightly increased in California, but they remain fairly stable over 14 days. And the ICU numbers have increased, so that's really helpful for us to know, because if we had a surge in hospital need, we have to utilize outside resources for that. The statewide healthcare system can surge up to almost 35, excuse me, 53,000 beds and 3,700 ICU beds. Currently, 28% of that surge capacity is being utilized in the SE surge bed, and 6% is being utilized at the general hospital surge bed. So that's really good as well. The, we've had no healthcare workers infected. We are, our testing rate is at 0.02% positive. That's well below half a percent, so that's also really good. And then we've had no positive cases that have come from exposures to positive cases. I would like to reiterate something that our health officer Gavin and Governor Newsom emphasized recently, that the state public health directives prohibit professional social commuting mass gatherings. Gatherings are defined as meetings or other events that bring together persons from multiple households at the same time for a shared or group experience in a single-room space or place, such as an entourage stadium, arena, large conference room, meeting hall, or other indoor/outdoor space. Again, when six feet of distance cannot be maintained, and that's the threshold of numbers that we consider a large gathering. However, the exception is, in an effort to balance first amendment interests with public health, the state public health officer created an exception to the prohibition against mass gatherings for face-based services, cultural ceremonies, as well as protests. We want to reiterate the importance of how we progress, especially now, that we're encouraged. However, both our health officer and myself are optimistically cautious. That's probably the best way to put it. The concern we have again is that this illness does not seem to be going away yet. As long as there are numbers of uninfected persons, we continue to see positive cases. I look at the data in surrounding counties to measure what's going on there. We still have increased cases in the Bay Area and many areas in the state. And the way we travel can make it potentially possible for any in our county to be exposed in another county. That's number one. Number two, we see surrounding counties that have increased numbers. The most concerning recently is Tana County, that went from one case to 20 cases recently. So we also look at our partner counties and see how the disease, what the disease activity is in those counties. We continue to emphasize the importance of masking. There are individuals that are unable to wear face coverings for medical reasons. However, that's part of the reason why we want to encourage our populations when they're out and about is to wear face coverings. It continues to be one of the best practices for preventing spread, community spread. We encourage our businesses to continue masking their employees, and we, I'm sure Kristy will discuss this when she gets her presentation. The only other comment would be handwashing, those primary best practices of handwashing, social distancing, covering air, cough, and sneeze, and staying home period. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Thank you for your diligence and all that, team. Quick clarification on the mass gatherings. Of course, you spelled out those groups that could gather. With 4th of July upon us soon, there are, you know, folks of barbecues and larger parties, that certainly falls within no mass gatherings, because it's bringing together other households.
I'm going to let Kristy discuss the issue of the July 4th.
Okay. Supervisor Grobs. Supervisor Finley, do you have any questions?
I was just really referring to mass gatherings. 4th of July was an excuse, so.
Supervisor Brown?
I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Kristy Anderson, Trinity County, Mar-a-Lago. I kind of wanted to go over some of the reopening in the last couple of weeks. So since the last board meeting, we did move forward in going along with what the state guidance had provided in allowing bars to reopen, wineries, family entertainment centers, hotels, campgrounds, RV parks, outdoor recreation, gyms, public pools, museums, galleries. We also worked very hard to help provide guidance for graduation ceremonies and approval for the fireworks, just the fireworks show for the 4th of July. We've been reviewing many, many plans submitted every single day and seeing what falls within the state guidelines. We have a meeting set for tomorrow to review additional sectors that may qualify for reopening as of June 19th, which would include nail salons, massage parlors, spas, and guidelines for outdoor gathering activities. We've also been monitoring businesses, and this is really important in the containment plan, to show that Trinity County is meeting our standards and our deal with the state. And we found, just alone in Weaverville, 50 businesses that did not have a certificate of compliance. So just to give you an example, we'll be breaking down by different regions, geographical regions, and following up on that. We did handout an additional 1,000 masks to businesses this last week. And to kind of answer Supervisor Morris's question about gatherings, at this time, it's still really prohibitive, mass gatherings, the state guidance. However, some ways we might be able to allow some outdoor gatherings, but we're going to work on that language. We do know about a committee of people that are trying to do something else for the 4th of July. It's not exactly sanctioned by any one group, and I will say that they will need a lot of permits to do some of those items that they were explaining, and that would not be allowed at this time. Does anybody else have any questions for me?
A little clarification. Thank you, Kristy, and thank you for working with the Weaverville Chamber on fireworks. Obviously, it's going to be a little different type of fireworks in terms of their setting, but it sounds like it will work, so thank you. Back to your mass gathering issue, you know, there's a lot of mass gatherings that are not allowed, but, you know, folks wanting to have barbecues with a variety of friends, does that still fall within not being able to?
So we're going to review, and we really want to give some guidelines, because we think it's really important, instead of just accepting everybody's plans and reviewing them individually, to say that these parameters, it needs to fit these parameters, to make sure we fall into the state and local guidelines for gatherings.
Mike Manisch, do you have another question unrelated to mass gatherings? There seems to be some mixed messages coming across. Of course, they still have not lifted essential travel. Only other recreational partners, like the Forest Service, have emphasized that point by saying, please, no long-distance travel for recreation, you know, kind of recreating your own backyard or region. So our TOT partners who want to promote the county certainly feel this mixed message on how much they should be promoting under this non-essential travel deal. Any clarification you might have?
I know the language was changed to a little bit lighter language from highly discouraged to not openly encouraged, which is a little weird for me to interpret. But I will say that, you know, the fact that RVs, hotels, and everything has been on that list for reopening gives me a little more encouragement to say that I think we're moving forward, and I think that it's not necessarily a no anymore.
So should our TOT partners be promoting to the outside world to come here? Is that a kind of big question?
Yeah, and that is a very good question. And you know what? We'll discuss that tomorrow and give some guidelines for that.
Supervisor Grobs?
No.
Supervisor Brown?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy?
Yeah, we just wanted the board to know that we'll be meeting, the COVID team will be meeting tomorrow, reviewing what the governor came out with on Friday the 12th, and he's got some new guidelines coming out on 19th. So we'll sneak peek at what that is, so we'll be in tomorrow with the doc and go through how it affects Trinity County, and we'll report back to the board at that time, and then probably press release to.
That concludes our COVID update, and at this time, we would break into the public comment, but I can see there's some members in the audience that I believe are waiting for this afternoon. There was an item, item 4.1 has been pulled. It will not be heard today, so if you were waiting to hear that, it won't be heard. So we're going to move on to public comment now. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole to the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on subsequent board agendas. We will now open it to the public that is in the audience. If there's anyone here in the public that wishes to speak, now is your time.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. John Brower from Junction City. Partly a question about the item that's been pulled. Does that mean that you'll be taking comment at all on it, or it's completely off the agenda for today?
It is off the agenda for today. I will entertain comments because you're here, and I know some of you have come an hour away, and you didn't know, so.
Thank you. I brought some really informative information from surrounding jurisdictions on cannabis taxes. I'd like to pass them out to anyone who's interested. And wanted briefly comment that I'm glad that this item was pulled. I think it was a very misguided proposal and didn't seem to have any industry input, and our Trinity County Agriculture Alliance group has been working hard on an industry-sponsored tax plan, cannabis industry. So I look forward to having a discussion about that and soon. Thank you.
Kristy, can you make sure that the supervisors that are absent receive this and that it raises the backup for the minutes? Thank you. Are there any other?
Good morning, Adrian Keyes-Hayford. As President of the Trinity County Agriculture Alliance, I would like to formally request that if there are proposals that are put forward in the future that were included in the development and discussions around them, we have the ability to offer insights and information directly from inside of the industry from now four years of experience working in this industry, and I think there are opinions and insights that can be really valuable to developing a successful tax policy in the future. I'm fully aware that we will be paying a tax, and I have no objection to that. It just simply needs to be a measure that is effective for all parties. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Two up in the lobby.
Is there anyone on Zoom that has called in for public comment?
My name is Non Tran. I'm a distributor from Southern California. I know our tax measure thing got removed from today's agenda, but I would just like to speak quickly on it, is if there is any taxing going on for distribution in the Trinity County, it will make it very, very difficult for any distributors further south to work with Trinity County farmers. Will pretty much make us forced on our end to go work with other counties, which, you know, as us as a distributor, we have spent a lot of time and effort working with Trinity County farmers, promoting them, telling them their, telling their story to the general public, dealing with about 150 dispensaries and telling that story. I would love for this to get put back onto the agenda, and I would like to be invited to speak on this behalf too, because I believe this would really hurt Trinity County farmers a lot. And I would love to see if I can put some input onto it to help out.
Mr. Tran, please contact the deputy, the clerk deputy, and let us know how we can contact you.
Yes, I will make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that has a comment?
Brian Tarbell, Hayfork. Yeah, I would just like to echo what the other speakers before me have been saying. I think we sort of need a little bit of a paradigm shift, the way that we're looking at cannabis taxation. Just like any other small business, we're struggling to survive in this newly-regulated marketplace. So we really need to look towards tax measures that are implemented in a fair manner. The cannabis industry really does want to provide revenue for Trinity County. We realize that the county is struggling, and we want to do our part, but the taxation needs to be fair, and it needs to be done in a manner that's going to provide long-term revenue and help us succeed in the long run, so we can also help the county succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more citizens that need public comment? I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board and move into our regularly-scheduled agenda. At this time, you will receive a, item 1.2, receive a presentation from mobility planners regarding the final drafts of the Short Range Transit Development Plan for the fiscal years 2020 through 2025, and the Coordinated Public Transit Human Service Transportation Plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2025. No fiscal impact, welcome body.
Good morning, Oliver Chapman, Trinity County Transportation Commission, and I'm just here to introduce Cliff Chambers, who is our lead consultant, the updated Short Range Transit Development Plan and our coordinated plan. We also had with him on his team Transit Marketing, that did the marketing piece, and then Amma Transit, who updated the coordinated plan. We're required to update the Short Range Transit Plan every five years, and so we do it with the coordinated plan because it's the same public outreach. We talk to the same people and the same stakeholders. So Cliff is here, and I'll turn it over to you.
Is there a technical situation?
It will be in about three minutes. It says it's going to timeout, so I'll have to probably reboot.
So we can either hold your presentation so it goes live, because we have to reboot, or we can start and then pause, and I will give the decision to you, sir.
It's really up to the chair. I've got my notes here. It would be better to have the PowerPoint, if that's possible.
So we'll just wait, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Do you have that moment?
Sure.
Thank you. So those that are online listening and those that are watching by Zoom, there will be a momentary lapse. Please hang in there with us. So no one will be back on?
We'll back up, but we won't have some people in order.
Can you tell the supervisors?
Jeremy's calling back on right now.
You say county council is back on? Can we just wave your mic on? Thank you, supervisors. Thank you, public for rejoining us, and we will now continue and actually launch our presentation. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Cliff Chambers. I'm the owner of Mobility Planners LLC, and I'll be providing a presentation on the key findings and recommendation of both the Short Range Transit Development Plan and what we nickname as the Coordinated, um, Coordinated Plan. So the Short Range Transit Plan itself is a, um, five-year blueprint of how Trinity Transit should develop over the next five years. And the Coordinated Plan is the coordination between Trinity Transit and, and human service agencies. So if you have a slide show up, you're getting there. Okay, you're getting there.
Thank you.
Go to the, go to the next slide, please. The hallmark of our planning efforts for both of these planning efforts was an extensive public outreach program. Um, we, uh, had passengers on, onboard Trinity Transit fill out a questionnaire and we received 89 back. We sent a postcard to all Trinity County households inviting them to listening sessions that we sponsored throughout Trinity County, and we had really good attendance at those, uh, listening sessions. We talked to the SS TAC at the beginning of the week. We were here four days. There were four of us here for four days, uh, meeting with people, meeting with representatives of the health industry, um, human service agencies, uh, senior centers, and we, we also spoke by phone with tribal representatives. We also had a coordination meeting because of the importance of connecting services in Redding and Arcata, and we had a coordination meeting to talk through some of those issues. Next slide, please. I won't go through all the, the key themes that we got from the outreach, but I'll just cover a few. Certainly, Trinity County is an aging population. The percentage of people who are elderly is significantly increasing, and this will continue as the years go on. There's generally about, um, 11 years between the time people lose their license because of age and when they're no longer good drive and, and when they die. So there's going to be a growing need for mobility for the aging population. Second key finding I want to highlight is there's a very good perception of Trinity Transit in the community. It provides very good, uh, mobility services. It has a regular group of riders, and people told us that there's really a need to, for lifeline services that are currently not served, um, by Trinity Transit. And there are several issues in terms of financial capacity and sustainability of, of services that we need to address as part of these plans. And then finally, people can access Trinity Transit by their bicycle, but the bicycle routes to it, and we heard a lot about access to and from the bus stops. Uh, next slide, please. We completed drafts of the plans right before COVID-19 shelter-in-place order came. And so we've updated some of what we can. There's a lot of uncertainty, as you know, in terms of what the longer-term impacts of COVID-19 will be. It's very likely that ridership and revenue base will decline. The good news is, is that Trinity Transit has been eligible for the Federal Cares Act is getting in a first phase, close to $350,000 for two federal programs, and a second allocation will be made, and it's yet to be determined how much will be offered. But Trinity Transit in general is in very good financial situation, has an operating reserve of, of over $900,000, so it's well set for this kind of crisis situation. Um, the important point I really want to make on this bottom is the bottom slide, you have a later agenda item for HRN funding. HRN provides very important mobility gap filler types of, uh, services in terms of mileage reimbursement vouchers, gas vouchers. This program is really important. This public transportation, there's going to be a lot of fear when we do open up about writing public transportation. They provide a lot of very important services. Next slide. So I'm going to just really quickly go through some of the, uh, Short Range Transit about key findings and recommendations. Next slide. Back in 2014, when the last Short Range Transit Plan was developed, there was recommendations for implementing Saturday service, uh, improved hours, improved Lewiston services, just as examples. The number of hours of operation went up, and then there was a, a significant decline in federal funding. It's now been restored, but it required, uh, Trinity Transit to eliminate Saturday service. It also required reductions in Lewiston service. And the next slide, what happened is that ridership, uh, declined because of that, but it's also followed a nationwide trend in declining transit ridership. So ridership dropped from around 17,000 in fiscal year 2014, 15, to about, uh, 13,418, 19. Next slide. It's very expensive to operate, uh, public transportation and accounting the size. Um, the operating cost per vehicle service hours, which means how much it costs to operate one-hour service when the vehicle is in, can collect fares, has increased substantially. It, it went from $107 per hour in 1314 to $143 in 1819, which is a 33% increase. The cost for a person getting onboard the bus for a one-way trip increased from $34.95 in 1314 to, uh, $50 in 1819, which is a 43% increase. And then there's state requirements that fares as a portion of, proportion of operating cost has to meet a 10% threshold. It's right there right now, but the, the trend has been downward, and this is an overall concern. So the bottom line is that Trinity County is a small county. It's having to operate a core service from Redding, um, to Arcata. The financial participation is really on, the burden is on Trinity County. Shasta County doesn't provide any funding for the service. Humboldt County provides the link between Willow Creek and, uh, Arcata, but there needs to be, uh, more regional cooperation and the financial support of Trinity Transit. Uh, next slide. So the, uh, as I said, given the institutional structure and available funding resources that are available to such a small county, the service improvements can only be made by better utilizing the available hours provided by three existing drivers and a transit coordinator. So the cost structure does not enable to address most of the needed improvements that we learned about in the public outreach process, which includes restoring Saturday service. Uh, by far, there was general consensus in terms of between Redding and Arcata, there should be a choice of two trips a day in each direction. Right now, there's only one trip in each direction. That's just simply not affordable. And then the, it really should, it should be midday service every day in Lewiston. That's not affordable. And the dialerite services that are currently provided by senior centers are, are very limited, and there's going to be a growing need for dialerite services throughout the counties. Most other agencies like in, uh, Shasta County and Humboldt County have very robust dialerite services. Trinity County can't afford that right now. What we can afford is, next slide, is modest, um, lifeline service improvements. So lifeline services, one day a week between Coffee Creek and Trinity Center to Weaverville, Hayfork to Trinity Pines once a week, adding a second midday trip to Lewiston, or providing Lewiston service three days a week, all having a midday trip. All of these are just very modest improvements, but are feasible within the existing four drivers, uh, including the transit coordinator you currently have. But COVID-19 will definitely have additional demand for additional mileage reimbursement through HRN for voucher cards and so forth and so on, and that's being addressed later in your agenda today. And as you know, Golden Age Senior Center, uh, has gone through quite a bit of transition. They're now back up and, and running, but those, the demand for those types of services will be continuous and will, how it increase. Next slide. Institutionally, our, our primary recommendation is that there really does need to be a jointly-sponsored study between Trinity County, Humboldt County, and Shasta County to look at the long-term needs, the corridor between Redding and Arcata, with better financial participation by all partners, developing joint marketing activities, better fare integration. Right now, if you go a full trip, you have to pay three different fares, and you really need to, uh, provide better consistency. Trinity County can't afford Saturday service. Humboldt and Shasta County, as I said, all have Saturday service. In fact, you know, some are talking about Sunday service. So there needs to be just better regional, uh, coordination and funding of these services. Next slide. And that really comes about with really having better use of technology for like a regional website. Right now, if you're planning a trip, you have to go to three different, um, websites, and there's a great example in, in Oregon where transit agencies have gotten together in the rural areas and really coordinate this so there's a one-stop shop for those kinds of services in a regional, uh, website. Next slide. And then finally, um, the countywide direct mail through every door, direct mail, which is the service of the postal service, where they provide, um, you know, to all, uh, a postcard, very affordable to all households, could be strategically used to generate trial ridership. Uh, next slide. This is an example we recently did in Morongo Basin where Joshua Tree is, where we offered some free passes for people to try the service, to show how it works, and this can be, be a very effective way to promote as Trinity Transit reopens, uh, its services. Next slide. So I'm now going to really briefly discuss the Coordinated Plan and the key findings. Um, next slide. The, the focus of the Coordinated Plan is on four market segments, older adults, persons with disabilities, people of low income, and veterans. And the plan really documents in detail, which you have copies of in your packet, of the potential strategies and funding, but it's, as Polly said earlier, it's really required for grant applications, which Trinity Transit has been very successful in obtaining in the past. So with, uh, next slide. What the plan does is really build on a long history that has been in Trinity County of good coordination. The social service agencies and Trinity Transit have worked really well, and the bus pass program, uh, the funding of HRN mileage and gas vouchers, and that partnership is really key. The Trinity County technical support to the senior center transportation programs, and then the coordination and connections with other transit operators. There's been a lot of work to come in. It certainly can be improved, but that has always been a strong foundation. So it, we want to address new needs as they, uh, mature. For example, as the aging population that I talked about and the strategies to leverage, uh, opportunities. Next slide. The Coordinated Plan has four specific goals, and I really covered the first two as, in, in the Short Range Transit Development Plan of enhancing Trinity Transit to meet additional needs. For example, the additional lifeline services that I mentioned, and then through kind of marketing and better information and, and rebuilding the transit ridership, which I talked about, and there's a lot more detail in the detailed reports that, that are in part of your packet. But I want to focus on the third one, which is to strengthen partnerships, to build new partnerships, to meet additional needs, and to coordinate the safety for emergency, uh, planning for transit and non-motorized trips. Uh, next slide. The Coordinated Plan really recognizes challenges that I've, I've talked about before, about the reduced funding basis, but also the human service agencies, uh, really in, in the county have really struggled to be financially sus, uh, sustainable, and there's a Medicaid, um, non-emergency transportation program through Partnerships Health Program that needs, it's not well-known. It's not well-known to people who are eligible, so there's a better need for coordination of, of, of information. Next slide. So I'm going to focus on the goal three, which is strengthen partnerships and building new partnerships to meet additional trips. And that's through, um, next slide. There are limited mobility choices in county for those who, who can not afford to own a bike, uh, a, a car, or can, uh, do not have a car or a driver's license. There's , uh, existing partnerships like HRN, the senior centers, human service agencies, but there's an, uh, important need to look through with neighboring counties transit. And if one thing comes out of COVID-19, I hope there's better coordination between Trinity Transit and the school districts and the busing programs and after-school programs, and there's a lot of overhead that could be really looked at creatively in a study that I recommended of how to work better, and perhaps there'll be state legislation that will remove some of the restrictions for doing so, because I can't really get into detail now, but it's really important. And then next slide. That being the limited, um, the limited cost to strengthen, um, to SS TAC, which you have a very good SS TAC in this county, the Social Services Transportation Advisory Council, uh, continued participation, uh, in the Industry Association, CAL Act, which is statewide, and Polly has provided a lot of really good leadership in that organization over time, and then pursuing the joint applications for grant applications. Uh, next slide. I've talked a lot already of a lot of the importance of new information and the importance of information dissemination, so I won't spend much time here. Next slide. Other than to talk about, you know, partnerships for improved travel training for seniors and others who might have some fear in using public transportation, trying to attract 20% new riders through, you know, and, and then basically new information. For example, when the Redding Ranch Tribal Health Facility opens, as I mentioned, the school districts coordination, and then we all have a really good, uh, trip planning with our smartphones through Google Transit, but most people don't know about the, the transit part of that. It's really easy to plan a trip from A to B using, uh, Google Transit, and so promotion of that. And then finally, my final, my final point is on goal four, which is to coordinate, uh, next slide. Which is basically, um, en, ensure that emergency services planning with public transit human service agencies and school transportation is, is coordinated. Next slide. And this is really obvious since we've had the recent fire history, uh, the recent pandemic, uh, emergency experience, and, and, and basically the coordination for, for emergency response is critically important. And public transit really needs to have a seat at the table and that emergency response, uh, for those, um, emergency, for those emergencies when they occur. And it's critical that Trinity Transit is really invited to be a participant in the county office of emergency services and ensuring that human service organizations are also part of, uh, the, the discussion. And with that, I'll conclude. Next slide. If you have, uh, oh, yeah. So basically, Trinity, I mean, it's, I've already kind of made those points. So I'm done with the presentation. Next slide. Um, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Supervisor Brown, do you have any questions?
So in the presentation, uh, I found it very important.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Supervisor Finley? No questions? Supervisor Rose?
No.
Supervisor Morris?
No, good presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, and your commitment is just outdone by your passion, and I look forward to, and I will shoot an email off to Ed Presley, who is our Office of Emergency Services, and request that perhaps Amanda send you an invitation to the disaster council. I didn't realize that you weren't on that, so I will, I will encourage that.
Okay, great.
A good positive thing. So thank you, well done.
All right, thank you very much.
Moving back to our agenda, consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board's, by one roll call motion. A member of the board, staff, and public may request an I to be pulled and considered separately. Supervisor Brown, do you have anything you would like to pull?
No, I do not.
Do you have anything to do with that? No, okay, Supervisor Rose? Supervisor Morris? And I don't. Yeah, the other one. Yes, yeah. Anybody from the department heads or staff?
Shelley Nelson, HR Director, wanted to pull 2.6.
And the public. Bringing it back to the board, I would entertain a motion. So moved. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown? Human Resources, item 2.6, adopt a resolution approving a salary schedule for Trinity County employees effective July 1st, 2020, no fiscal impact.
Good morning. So there was an item on Exhibit A, which is the alphabetical listing of classifications, which we omitted one position, which is the Director of Behavioral Health, and I wanted to add that. Would you like me to elaborate on what the item is about?
My backup's not calling yet, so on Exhibit A.
So this is an alphabetical listing of all classifications within the county.
Go ahead and read it into the record.
So I would like to add the Director of Behavioral Health, and the salary item that goes with that is the letter D, like David, 060.
Are there any questions? Not seeing any. I entertain a motion with the corrected amended. So moved.
Motion to approve, second.
Decide. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris? Yes. Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Charlie? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to reports and announcements. Item 3.1, reports from department heads. Is there any department head in the audience that would like to report?
I should have just stayed up here. I just wanted to give you an update. The county is going live with a new payroll and billing system through the auditor's office and human resources. And we're going live in July, which is a couple weeks, so we're really, really excited. But we have been working tirelessly for months and months. We are doing all sorts of testing, identifying some issues, and getting them corrected. So we're really excited, and we have a lot of confidence that this change, you know, though a little intimidating, it's going to go smoothly. Just wanted to thank the auditor's office and the IT department, who have really been putting some long hours in as well, supporting this program for all of us, the software. And then Becca Cooper in our risk management department has been working with Kristi Anderson, Environmental Health Director, and they're working with the county departments and establishing their safety plans for reopening for COVID-19 preventative purposes. I know that several departments have already completed their safety plans, and the others are close to finishing them, so I just wanted to give you that update.
Are there any other department heads that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on the phone, department heads? We will move on to reports from the county administrator officer, Dr. Coons.
Commander Chair, from the board, two things to report. One, I have to report that we have our annual loss prevention audit, and I will call out that Cooper, because she is our risk manager, along with Shelley's office, supervised by Shelley Nelson, but we scored 100 out of 100, which is the highest we've ever scored. Yeah, which means anything over 95 points, we get an additional $1,000 into our loss prevention subsidy, so now we have $3,500. And it's quite an audit, it's not just a checklist. It's a year-long process that she has to go through to make sure that all inspections, all departments are done, that the staff are trained, new staff orientation. So it's an ongoing process and pretty tenuous, and she did a wonderful job, and we are perfect this year. I'd like to congratulate her.
Thanks, Chair.
Keeping us, keeping us not only safe, but we're getting rebates on the money we're putting into our loss prevention, so that's great. And earlier the board had asked if I would start looking into organizations that conduct strategic plans, so I spoke with several, and I spoke with some CEOs around the state, and it seemed that they all agreed that James, I'm going to scrub his name, but it's Delizia Corporation is a consultant, and I've been talking with him, and I would like to ask the board if I allow him to do a presentation, his organization to do a presentation maybe on the 7th of July, to discuss an overview of what his organization could offer the county for strategic planning.
That sounds wonderful. Supervisor Morris, Supervisor Rose? Supervisor Brown?
Oh, that sounds great.
You have the majority of the board.
Okay, I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to James, and let's give to that presentation for the sound.
Oh, he said great, so you have the support.
Okay, thank you very much.
So that'd be awesome. Reports from members of the board of supervisors. Supervisor Brown?
Hello, um, let's see, I have no out-of-county travel, as everything has been zoomed. Currently calling in from Mono County, actually, at the Bridge Port Inn. And I, the only thing I'd like to report and ask for the board is request for a special meeting to discuss the appointment of the district floor planning commissioner. I don't know if there is time that could be made available in the next few days, sometime this week, but if we can take a polling after the meeting, try to find a time, ownership though.
Either that, or we, I'm sorry Supervisor Brown, if we're done, our next planning commission meeting is July 7th, then we have a meeting, I'm sorry, July 9th, and we have a board supervisor meeting on the 7th, so that would be prior to sort of that spice the time he's requesting.
Okay.
So Supervisor Brown, why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't you have a conversation with Dr. Coons, and if you feel that we need to expedite it, we could go ahead and do that, but I'll let you to figure that out, and then he can give direction to Ms. Tina if we are need to be pulled. Are you okay with that?
Yes, that sounds fine, thank you.
Supervisor Morris?
Has the recruitment been noticed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we posted it, I did change, posted it several weeks ago.
Thank you, that's a big, that's an important question. Supervisor Finley?
No out-of-county travel.
Okay. Supervisor Rose?
Yeah, the only thing I have to report again, everything is zoomed, but the only thing out of the ordinary is Supervisor's remorse and I have participated in Jared Huffman's, I don't know what you call it, town hall, except it's only government officials of cities and counties in his district that he's been reporting, what's going back on in Washington, DC. Not a lot to report this time. The House passed legislation to inform, to do a lot of things, but to try to get the counties some more money to help recover. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Supervisor Morris?
In addition to Supervisor Rose, I think they've also, he's also tried to pursue additional funding, or at least rules around that small business aid that came out of the CARES Act and maybe the next round of money, because we found that on a previous call, we, a lot of the government officials said, hey, a lot of our small businesses aren't getting this money. So he's pursued that. Obviously, all our calls beyond that are Zooming, phone calls. CSAC has been heavily involved in the whole COVID process and working with the governor's office and the public health, state public health, also, also in the budget discussions for counties. So the budget for the state was passed the other day, I think yesterday afternoon, and it was the constitutional duty to pass that budget. By any, by no means, it does not signify the end of negotiations, whether it's further budget cuts, extra funding from the federal government that will take place over the next weeks ahead. So CSAC is very involved in all of that, and also trying to push for backfill for potential cuts that might be coming through the 1991 and '01 realignment that really affects counties. So that is it for now.
And I had the continuation of the COC establishment of our local COC, and I'm happy to report that Elizabeth Hamilton and Suzy Cockums have both agreed to be on our executive committee for that. It's a tri-county, it's not CAP, but it's very similar, and a lot of our funding gets put through this, and there's still a lot of learning to do on those things. So county matters, excuse me, county matters. These items include non-routine controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board of super, the board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. Item 4.2, discuss and/or take action to provide $1,000 from contingency to the Fire Chiefs Association to cover training costs and authorize the county administrative officer and auditor to sign the necessary budget adjustments. Potential increase in the general fund appropriation in the amount of $1,000 current cash balance in the contingency fund is $4,000, $417,354. Supervisor Morris?
Yeah, I think my item is fairly self-explanatory. I was at the chief's meeting last week, and they paid, they rounded $1,000 bucks trying to offer their volunteers this extra training, and so I wanted to see that the board could look to pick this up, as we all know. And also I wanted to bring Todd Corbett, Fire Chief for Weaverville, is here, to add a few other comments, and I'll just want to use this opportunity as a nod to all our men and women who volunteer throughout the county and our fire departments. So Todd, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add?
Just reiterate what this is, a little history, I know I wrote a little letter for your board packets, but basically this gives us a seat at a table on a group called SHIELD Training, which was formerly called Shasta Trinity Tahima Training Consortium. And basically what this is focused around is it's a college-like atmosphere, but it's geared more toward, it's geared 100% for first responders, including law enforcement, and it also is geared towards continuing the education and certification of said first responders. So the $1,000 dues, the Chiefs Association's been paying it, we're to the point where we only bring in $400 in dues a year, so paying $1,000 in dues has got us down to where we're pretty strapped for funding. Like I said, this gets us, what this $1,000 a year gets is a seat at the table to guide what kind of trainings that the consortium puts on. It also gives us ability to go down to their campus facility down in Redding, which is separate from the college. They have a brand-new state, they are a live fighter training facility, gives us options to do, and it also gives us the ability to take remote ITV classes at the campus here in Weaverville while they teach them in Redding. And then in the future, again, they're really ramping up their law enforcement side of this to match their first responder ENT and fire, so it's stuff the sheriff Saxon can take advantage of in the future. And they're also looking to, if this grows, like in the five-year plan, is even looking at putting about a small training facility here in Weaverville for sure in town. So that's the importance of it, and why we can no longer report.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from board? Supervisor Brown, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you for the information, and congratulations on getting a seat at that table.
Thank you.
Supervisor Finley? So open it to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to weigh in on this matter? So I'll bring it back to the board. Thank you, Judy, for bringing this.
Yeah, I would need to approve.
I'll second.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Charlie?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, I'm sure I just have a comment. CIO, would you, and I'm sorry to break up during the fight, but possibly look into, I know we contribute some money to, I think, the fire departments for their workers' comp, if I recall. Could you see if we could look into putting this into next year's budget as well?
Absolutely.
If they choose to still be engaged with...
That was one of the questions I just got from one of our financial people, was do we need to put this into next year's budget?
Yeah, I would like to see it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 4.3, present to the county fee waiver policy that the Trinity County Food Bank project provides a benefit to the public and is not for the purpose of fundraising, approve the Trinity County Food Bank's application for waiver of county fees, waiving building fees in the amount of $4,145.67, potential loss of revenue to the building department in the amount of $4,145.67.
I guess I can take that one. Yes, the Food Bank has received some grant funding to expand their operations, and will do an expansion to the, to the property that's actually owned by the county, and they're asking for a fee waiver, which is standard when it is either nonprofit or more than the county operations.
Any questions from the board?
What exactly is their expansion?
Good question. I think they're expanding their, their food bank capacity, their, the size of their warehouse, so it's actually increasing the square footage of the warehouse. I'm trying to pull it up right now, because I thought you would be here to discuss this person, but I believe it's around $80,000, they receive around $80,000. List of the fees would be...
Yeah, it's have the fees.
Yeah, but I believe they received a little excess of $80,000 to expand the stored size of the food bank we have, by the sheriff's department, yeah, the sheriff's department. So be a facilities improvement for the county that utilized by the food bank.
Yes.
It says on one of the pages, the project is a 40x60 metal structure that's insulated on concrete slat. on concrete floor.
Is it set at the same location?
Same location.
I believe this was donated also, the building, the storage facility, container was also donated, and it is on county property?
No further questions. Are there any questions from Supervisor Finley?
Yeah, I assume this team can't wait?
The staff says it has no recommendation. I did not speak to Kim.
It would be, it would be a loss of revenues, potential revenues to planning department budget or buildings budget. However, being the NIS County property, it's not common for us to charge ourselves to, for building fees.
John, Supervisor Finley, could you hear Dr. Coons's response?
Very similar to, will we put the roof on this building?
I just want to make sure he can hear it.
He says I see that.
So Supervisor Brown, do you have any?
We have an addition from...
Oh.
It said county board, county board, yes, I hear.
I think that's here.
Okay, I think it's here.
Kim says it's not going to affect her budget.
Director Hunter reported in that it will not affect her budget. That was a good question, though. Supervisor, are you, are you concluded?
He said thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Brown?
I have no questions.
Supervisor Groves?
No question.
Supervisor Morris? Any questions from the public? Bringing it back to the board. So moved.
Yeah, one second.
Thank you.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley? Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
County administrative office, item 4.4, adopt a resolution which adopts a preliminary budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, including reserves, enterprise funds, and dependent special districts in the amount of $130,544,208.
Thank you, Chairman Chair, members of the board. Yeah, good news is, we have an estimate of what our expenditures are going to be, which is $130,544,208. So we're asking the board to pass a resolution allowing us to move forward, which will in the next few months, through July, we'll be meeting with the budget team and departments and figuring out how to balance, because right now, our anticipated revenues are $118 million, so we're looking around $12 million overall. Four and a half of that is in the general fund. But in those, in that four and a half million dollars shortfall, we are taking consideration fully funding the sheriff's department, correctional staff, one additional sheriff's deputy with an additional sheriff's tech. We also are fully funding OPEC and the continued obligations to the fair. Things that aren't in this four and a half billion dollar shortfall is the amount we obligated to complete the jail, any repairs to public facilities, let's see, and if there's any additional staffing requested. So we have quite a challenge out in front of us, but each year we go through and review the departments, and they're always excellent at turning in budgets that can work for the county, so we'll report back with the CEO recommended budget in September. But in the meantime, we'll be working real hard to close that gap of around, right now $12 million, could be up to $16 million. But that's overall general, the general fund one is the one that's usually the most difficult, because our non-general fund budgets, what the revenues are is what they get to live on. The general fund budgets are the ones that we spend the most time trying to bridge that gap. So we're asking the board to adopt the resolution so we can continue moving forward into fiscal year 21, 2021, and we'll report back in September with the recommended budget.
Any questions from the board of supervisors? Supervisor Brown?
No, I don't have questions.
I think that was a no, I'm going to move on, if you, Supervisor, Supervisor Groves?
No, this time.
No, this time Supervisor Morris?
So just for clarification, in the past, this seems to represent the budget that we're just finishing, so our departments can operate versus, I just want clarification from the public, so they know this is not the only time we're going to have a budget discussion, this is just really to keep us moving forward.
Yeah, that's great, this allows us to keep moving as of July 1st, because our budget that, the 1920 cycle ends on June 30th. This allows the departments to continue to make payroll and continue to move forward until we present the entire budget to the board, for the board to discuss, review in detail, and hopefully approve after public comment.
And this pretty much should represent the current budget year that we are in, so they have rough idea of parameters of how they could be spending?
No, this actually is our next year's budget, the budget we're running on until end of month, yeah. So this is, yeah, this is, this is our, this is for the 2021 budget. Our, if you remember, our 1920 budget was around $136, $138 million, but that had the jail revenues in it, this one doesn't have the jail revenues in it.
All right, okay.
So we're not on the same page?
No, not really, but I'll explain it.
I just want to jump in, are we in the middle of a vote? I think we need to make sure we finish.
Actually, we haven't opened it, we haven't, it's not, it's not bound to a vote, this was just discussed by the board of supervisors, thank you for clarifying that. Now I'll open it up to the pub. I'll open it up to the public, is there anyone from the public? No, bringing it back to the board. So I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution which adopts a preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2020 and 2021, looking for a second.
Supervisor Chow, I apologize to do not get the business man, your man in office here.
That's Susie?
We...
Okay, can we, can we, we need a second before this? Susie, you'll need a second before this?
Looks like we have a second, Supervisor Finley?
Thank you Supervisor Finley, please, Ms. Hamilton.
We had a request from the auditor's office to, on exhibit B of the resolution, which is the fixed assets that they are allowed to continue to purchase during this preliminary time, to increase the numbers of copiers that they're purchasing, potentially purchasing in fiscal year 2021 from four to five. So if that's okay with you guys, if you would mind amending your motion to include increasing that for the copier trust?
So I will amend my motion to allow the auditor's office to have an additional copier if Supervisor Finley would be so kind to second that.
He seconded.
Thank you Supervisor Finley.
Thank you both.
In comment, I'll say I really do not like these little add-ons at the last minute.
I concur.
And I apologize Supervisor...
We have to vote, we have, let us vote.
Email this morning.
Let us vote, and we'll get back.
Well, we're still in discussion, aren't we?
Yeah.
Now that we have the motion seconded.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yeah.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Susie, I know you got it last minute, and it wasn't on your watch, it just came to you, but I do concur Supervisor Groves, it makes it cleaner for us to be able to not amend. And now, what we've been waiting for, human resources, item 4.5, pursuant to county code 2.32.020, appoint Elizabeth Hamilton, employee ID number 01728, as Director of Health and Human Services effective June 16, 2020, and set her anniversary date as March 3, 2020, when she was appointed interim director. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for Director of Health and Human Services at A Steb is $15,336.
Good morning. Just wanted to remind you that our former Health and Human Service Director retired March 1st, and we had started a recruitment for the new director back in January. The first round of interviews were held March 12th. COVID hit, hit the latest, but eventually the top three candidates were recommended to the board to be interviewed in closed session. That closed session interview was held on May 19th, the top scoring candidate is Elizabeth Hamilton. We would like to recognize the several months that she served as interim to set her anniversary date, as you stated in the item. I wanted to congratulate her as well as you make the appointment.
Congratulations. Thank you. Supervisors, do you have any questions for Shelley or Ms. Hamilton? Congratulations. Opening it to the public? Bringing it on back to the board.
I would say that it was a very high-quality candidate pool that we saw at this level, so that is even higher, to be proud of, this, you know, higher scoring.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Is this a action item?
Yes.
I will move to adopt 4.5. Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley? Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
At this time, we will read the closed session. Item 5.1, continued from June 2, 2020, government code section 54954.5, parentheses, C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, number of case, cases, one, Westlands Water District, 5B, all persons interested in the matter of contract between the United States and Westlands Water District, Fresno County Superior Court, case number 19CECGO3887, and I will open it to public comment, 109.
Hello, John Brower from Johnson City, and I want to continue to encourage strong, strong action on this matter. Our water is possibly the most important issue facing our county, so I'd like to see this fought vigorously, thank you.
Any other public comment on Zoom? Moving on, item 5.2, government code section 54954.5, parentheses, F, conference with labor negotiation, county's designated representative, David Prentice, Sophia Meyer, and Shelley Nelson. Employee organizations, Deputy Sheriff's Association, probation, peace officers unit, management of confidential unit, skilled trades unit, and general unit. Public comment is open at this time for this item? Is there anyone on the phone, or Zoom? Okay, closed session, item 5.3, government code section 54956.8, conference with real property negotiators, APN 024-200-10, agency negotiator Rick Tippett, negotiating parties, Kyle Fans, under negotiation part, price and terms of payments. Anyone in the public to speak on item 5.3? Okay, well, we thank you for joining us at today's board of supervisors meeting, and we will adjourn the open session, and we'll have a 10-minute in between. Thank you. Thank you.